Okay, like to call to order. The Charter Township of Oxford Planning Commission Regular Meeting Thursday, February 27th, 2025. We could start by raising, standing in paying respects to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the midst of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Number three, we could note the role.
Noted, there is a quorum.
Number four, approval of tonight's agenda. Get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Number five, conflict of interest, ex parte contact. Does anybody have anything they need to discuss or report tonight? Seeing none. Number six, approval of the minutes, Planning Commission Regular Meeting, February 13th, 2025?
Motion for approval of the minutes, Planning Commission Regular Meeting, February 13th, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, public comment on items not scheduled for public hearing or on this agenda. Seeing no public. We'll move to number eight, Commissioners' comments, if anybody has anything they would like to address or discuss. Okay, seeing nothing. Move to number nine, unfinished business, master plan updated.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners, my name is Megan Mastin-Middock, I'm a principal with Carlisle Workman Associates and a colleague of Mateo Paslakwa. I've been involved with the master plan from its beginning and had helped with the steering committee that had done the public engagement. And then tonight Mateo had some personal business that I felt like I could handle this meeting on my own and then we could go from there. You have, you received an electronic copy of it last week. Ideally, we'd have gotten that to you a week earlier, there were some paragraphs even getting you there. So what we would offer is that this is the first of three work sessions on this draft if you want. So I know that you all got hard copies tonight, you may want to spend some time with those and mark them up. Mateo is here every Tuesday and Thursday. If you could give us a commitment that within the next week you would get us any handwritten edits, that would be, that would be helpful and then we could turn those back around to have that as part of something to you for your last meeting in March. Our only commitment at this point is to get something to the Township Board by April. We had sent you a memo also in your packet asking a couple of questions. What we've done over the process of this master plan, and I know we have four new Planning Commissioners who haven't been with, been on the Planning Commission during that whole time, is there were a number of things that the Planning Commission hadn't seen before. But what we've done over the, over the course of the last year is brought different sections for the Planning Commission to look at, bless, and then we put them all in this final draft that's before you tonight. So we had some very specific questions about the future land use chapter because that chapter, and that's on page 52, has some guiding factors that are from the current master plan. And then we updated the text on the urban service areas and the roadway capacity, the reclamation of extractive sites before we got into the future land use descriptions. And we wanted to make sure that that provided clear guidance on future land use decisions. So I wanted to start there with discussions of this, this is the only agenda item for tonight. We can do what works best and is most effective for you. So, but that was the leading question and I will not be offended if you start off and go someplace else.
You want to just start and go down a line or?
Oh, she had a leading question, right? What was your?
My leading question was that future land use chapter pages 52 to 76, do those provide clear guidance on future land use decisions? And then are there any changes needed?
I think they do.
Yeah, as I read through it, it seemed to make sense to me. It spelled out pretty clearly. If somebody's only had this in problem for a few weeks, right?
Yeah.
It's been.
So I think.
Pretty descriptive.
Yeah, on page 52, you talk about guiding factors. We talked about proximity to the village of Oxford, but we don't talk about proximity to mixed land use areas. Because you could have high density housing. Because it talks about having a high density housing close to the village and then it's supposed to taper off everywhere else except for the mixed use areas.
Except for those mixed use areas, yeah.
So that might be a bullet or in addition, at least call that out as part of one week guiding factors.
So that the high density is close to the village?
Yeah, but basically it's the proximity to the, to the mixed use areas.
Okay. So we maybe add something on page 52 to that guiding factor and then on page 55 add a bit more to that paragraph of, under the proximity, okay. All right, so I'm generally seeing nods from folks that as decision makers, reading this chapter, it gave you a good concept of what your decision making parameters would be and good guidance.
I think so.
What about, what about the leapfrogging thing? It just, the transition, I just, I don't, I really don't understand that. So if you could help me understand that a little bit more.
Leapfrogging in terms of utilities?
Yeah, so in order to maintain ordinance development, township decision making should only span, it's on 53 at the last paragraph. It basically, you know, it just, it just abruptly ends, I don't know if they, like, I didn't understand it. So like, I guess I had to look it up.
Okay. So be more descriptive about leapfrogging. So basically it's that the city, the township doesn't want to extend utilities?
Yeah, it just stops, it just doesn't explain it, like, so somebody's going to ask a billion questions.
Okay. Thanks.
I'm just looking through my notes, sorry.
No, that's fine. I'm, I'm good with awkward silences.
I don't want to be too picky, so when it comes to stuff, but stuff that I don't understand, I will say stuff.
Go back into a previous topic that discussed with Mateo last time on page 49. The water system. This is, the water district is currently in good condition. What does that mean? We have lots of capacity for new people, we, it's brand new, it'll last another thousand years. What does that mean? It's just a platitude.
Okay, we'll go, we'll go back to the Township Engineer and get more clarification on that.
Something more quantitative as opposed to just being, you know, the sky is blue. Looks nice.
Okay, thanks. Our other questions were, our next question was specifically about the open space and greenways plan on 70 to 72. And to me, after spending a lot of time with this document, the map on page 72 to me seemed to be the most helpful in guiding where future development should be since it's identified, it's basically the areas that are in white are the areas where there would be availability for development. If you're looking to protect agriculture, protect natural features. And then it has the, we kept, as it had been before, we kept that safety path system and trail system over it. But I know for the Planning Commission, protection of natural features and woodlands has been a much more in-depth discussion and there's lots more concerns that have come from the public in this master plan round than there had been previously.
Did you happen to meet with the safety path committee today?
Mateo did and then we got updated from Supervisor Curtis. We got an updated map that was done by Jim Sharp. So they identified, I think, 17 different segments for the safety path of master plan and that way we put those as a low priority or high priority and splitting them in half. So we would update this map according to the, according to that.
You're still going to do the low and high priorities on that? I thought, I thought it would be more.
We can, we can figure that out, they have them listed one through 17.
But that's, yeah, but those are the priorities within the safety path committee itself. We weren't, we weren't going to make those part of this document.
So we could just identify all of them, we could identify them as high priority or low priority. Those are the two choices.
Or you just have a picture of the proposed, here's the overall what the master plan looks like.
Yeah.
And just, and just do that.
And no priorities?
And no priorities.
Okay.
Because, yeah, it doesn't make sense from a safety path standpoint. We don't look at them that way from this group was low priority, this group was high priority. We try to prioritize the whole thing.
Okay.
You know, one through N.
Well, that was where I was headed here because two weeks ago, when we approved the nursing center, it had a safety path across the front which was approved. But there are two side streets and they said they did not want to put safety paths in, that they would pay for those. Now, are we still going to let that go on? That means that we're going to have mixture of safety paths, no safety paths. And we talk about that a little bit here about things being sort of disjointed today with respect to safety paths.
Yeah, that's exactly what they're trying to do within that committee is to remove that disjointness and not have these safety paths that go to nowhere.
Okay.
All right.
So should we say something about that in this document? That we're not going to accept payment in lieu of safety paths?
Would not say that at this point, we haven't figured out how we're going to handle, how do you make it fair for developers who have to put in safety paths and those, and those that don't? Should everybody pay? Should just some folks pay and do it? So that's something we need to, we need to resolve in terms of the way we establish the ordinance. Right now, the ordinance says everybody must do it, either must pay or put in a safety path. So we're going, we're going to revisit that and do what makes sense.
And I know the plan wasn't, the way we thought a lot is to do away with, or somewhat do away with the pay in lieu of because we want a safety path.
Yeah.
But there will be case by case situations like the senior center over there because there's going to be two areas that are going to be developed down the road. If we made up with a safety path in, when that gets developed, it's just going to be torn out during construction.
Wouldn't it be better to take those guns that they pay off and put in a high interest or a high interest making fund and then use that money to either put new safety paths in for people or if that safety path needs to be done, then they would actually do it. So instead of having the, the people that own the property put it in, no, they should pay the township and then we put it in.
They do pay the township.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, but they normally would put it in if they're doing a new, new development. Like if that, if that community right now wants to put those safety paths in, they could do that, but they choose to pay instead. So what we should do is, we should have the contractors or the homeowners pay the townships and then have them do the safety paths so that way we can actually make money on the stuff and then eventually use it as cash flow and then we can put safety paths in throughout all of Oxford.
I would argue that construction costs have gone up a lot faster.
Yeah, but you're taking, well, I mean, that's the investment part.
Even lose money on that in the long run, at least on, we would get it between now and last.
Yeah, well, I mean, everything's one up, rest, please, so.
With after developing, we're having to tear out a, a safety path that developer put in 20 years ago because it fell into disrepair and it's going to cost 20 times more, 10 times more than what it originally cost.
Good thing you know somebody that does pathways.
And Mr. Turner, to answer your question, the mechanism on whether people can pay in lieu for a safety path or whatnot, that doesn't need to be specified in the master plan because the master plan is such a big picture document. You can, you don't have to have that specificity of policy choices here.
That was going to be kind of my comment because the master plan is a guide for this commission to use when approving plans, right? And right now, I mean, it's sort of a question that I have, but it's also a comment. We voted on that last week. One of the things to vote on was that very thing. So if we don't like the idea of not putting a safety path, then we would not vote for the pay in lieu.
I agree.
And I think the option, the flexibility there is probably more optimal. But as far as this document goes, we can spell out what we prefer and then that way as a guiding thing for the next five years, we're all on the same page as to what the original intent of the master plan was, right? So.
So in terms.
Satisfies everybody.
Just from what I'm hearing, in terms of changes to the safety path portion, so on page 66, that table will be updated with the 13 priority paths that are identified by the safety path plan that was agreed upon today. We'll take out the priority column on table seven and then we'll update the map on page 67 so it just shows the priority segments and it does not differentiate by color between low and high priority.
So on those segments, and folks will be able to infer by the number of those segments, which are the high and which are the low priority. Because they won't, they are numbered one through 17 and number one is the high priority.
Yeah, well, and I, I think.
Number 17 is the low priority.
I think what we do in, in this document.
But that's okay.
Instead of putting one, two, one, one through 13.
Yeah.
We'll just put them in that order in the table and.
It's fine.
It can be, yeah, okay.
Just so I'm clear, why, why are we, why is there no priority on it at all? You're saying that all prioritized?
They're prioritized at the committee level, we don't prioritize them as high and low at, for this document.
Okay, I got you.
Because there may be instances that come up, such as the priority path by the high school where, when you originally looked at this, circumstances change and also a funding, funding change where instead of doing priority one, it was, it was expedient at the time to do what was maybe marked as priority five. And so don't want to necessarily shackle yourself in a plan to say we have to do, somebody might say, oh, you can't do five because you have one, two, three, and four ahead of it.
Okay, so, so is that the clarification then? We don't want to spell it out here in prior, in a priority list because it would be viewed as skipping priorities to, to move things around.
Yeah.
When in reality, it's just how things play out.
Yeah.
Okay, understood, thank you.
And then also where we're in this area of the plan, I think before the meeting, a number of people had said that map 14, the potential natural areas map, that could be crisper, we'll definitely take that note.
Yeah, I think to add on to that, I, all the maps should probably be looked at because some of them are really crisp and some of them are not, right? So if we're going to update one, we can, then maybe we can do all of them.
Yeah.
Just to make them all match.
Yep.
I think they look good digitally, it's just when you print them.
Yeah, that's why I said it might just be the format.
Yeah.
And then we open, then we update map 15 as well with that safety path, with, with the safety pass priorities one through 13. Anything else on the open space greenways before we go to concept plans? All right, on page just 73 through 76, these are concept plans. And we had, the Planning Commission had spent, I want to say about four meetings on these. And really when we were looking at them, we're looking at, we've got input from the property owner, what they were looking to do. These are sites that would likely be developed in the next five to 10 years. Also looked at some other sites when we went through this process. And these two were the two where decided that a concept plan made sense. And so, but what the Planning Commission had seen before always were drafts of the maps that are on page 74 and 76. Then we also added text that call out the priorities for these areas that are illustrated on the maps, but went into a little more detail about road paving, when those should be, if, and specifically for some that the paving needs to happen before you could implement this concept plan or certain utilities need to happen before you implement those. We wanted to make sure that these, number one, for the Planning Commissioners who were part of those conversations, that this reflects what your discussions and your understanding were. And then for folks who weren't part of those discussions, but now are meeting it, is it clear what the township's envisioning for these properties? And if someone brought a development proposal in front of you, do you think that you have good guidance?
I personally like these a lot.
I, I think as a new member, it really does help to understand visually where the developments and what they will be and what, what the plan or the vision is for the area. What would help me though is if they label, in the map, the, the roads were labeled.
Okay.
So it gives you a better sense of where I am in the township and the magnitude of the project or the concept.
Yep. Would it help also to have like an inset map where it showed where it is in the overall?
Yeah, that would be beneficial as well.
Okay. All right, and it's just Mr. Bailey and Mr. Turner. Did these reflect what you think the conversations were?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it was a good job.
Well, those are our very specific questions about things that were new, but we also wanted to know what changes would be needed overall in terms of content or formatting. If you have small personality things on formatting, I think we can take those offline. But if there are some big concepts, like I, I wasn't clear on this term and, and so those need to be clarified or I felt like this other layer of information could be added, things that you feel like would be beneficial to discuss with your colleagues, I would invite you to share those now.
So one overall thing I was looking for is, is we have this master plan. If it were completely executed, what would be the, the overall ratio of residential to business lands? What is our goal for this township?
Yeah, and I think that's illustrated on the future land use map, but I don't know that we have done that in terms of breaking it out by acreage.
I mean, I mean, it's kind of the vision, right? We want to have so much business use and we want to have so much residential use as we develop this community. What does that look like? You, you kind of have it in pictures, but what is that?
Yeah, and the.
Is it 90, 10, is it 80, 20, you know, 70, 30?
Yeah, maybe it's like, there's some other stuff in there too, like mixed use and industrial and, right? So if we could see all of those blended into one map, I think it would be visually beneficial.
I mean, the future land use map on page 62, that's what that intent is, is that when it's all built out, this is what it would look like.
So, yeah, it's, it's a picture and it's hard when we took it, right? Add some quantitative information to that, what does that mean for the township?
So a table that, for each of those that says it's this much acreage, it's this much percentage of the area?
Yeah, something like that.
Okay.
Either percentage or acreage, you know, we've got, we've got 10 million acres for business use and one acre for houses.
Probably the most. But, okay, yes.
But you see what I'm saying?
Yes, I see what you're saying.
Maybe something could be added to this table on page 87. It talks about land use categories, the associated zoning districts, and how much is in the associated zoning district?
Yeah. So that's a state law, that's a requirement by state law, that table. We could, I, I think what we could do is do a table as Mr. Wagner was talking about with those. I, I guess it's just a stylistic thing, whether that goes in the future land use chapter or whether that would go in the implementation chapter?
I think implementation chapter seems to be, to make more sense.
Okay, and maybe.
Because, because that represents the complete vision and not so much just the future.
Okay, and then with some sort of mechanism to track.
Yeah. Yeah, where we at, where we at today?
This is what we have, this is what we want to have, this is where we're short.
I mean, five years to, you know, whatever.
Okay. Yep, we can do that.
Any other questions?
Those were my questions, it's just, would just be interested, is there anything else that you felt that was missing?
Do update page three.
Page three, the acknowledgements or no?
Oh, you asked me to some acknowledgement and it doesn't represent the current state, okay. Well, all right, so formal, all right, that's fair, I get it now.
Yeah, there were a lot of.
You're fine, you're.
Well.
I don't have anything else.
I'm sure I'll have more questions as I read through it.
I'm sure I'll have more questions as I read through it a little more thoroughly. But yeah, you said Mateo's up here Tuesdays, Thursdays.
Yeah, if you could get things to him by next, if you've written pages and things that, if you could get to him by next Thursday, which is the sixth of March, then that gives us more than enough, that, that would give us a week to put things in. And then we could give you a new copy printed out at your table when you have your next Planning Commission meeting. And that Planning Commission meeting is going to be pretty, you, you've got a number of public hearings that night. So it might be best to just, we'll give you a revised hard copy. You often look at it and then look to have some sort of action item at your second meeting in March.
You know, I do have a question.
Sure.
We go back to page twelve, objective seven. We talked to using opportunities to improve the road system within the township. Does the township actually have the ability to improve the road system?
You can influence the changes to the road system. So with new development, you can definitely look to improve the road system. For instance, at that Levy property, the railroad concept plan, you could look to have that, you know, you're requiring, you're saying that we want this road installed because that's going to improve our street network. Otherwise, you are in some ways at the mercy of-
Exactly.
The road commission and MDOT.
Because there are other instances within the document where you talk about widening roads and connecting roads that need to be connected. I'm thinking, I don't think we do that.
No, you don't do that, but you do meet with RCOC every year.
Yeah.
They have more weight when they go to the federal government, when they go to the state, when they can point to a master plan that the community's had input on and say, these are needed. That helps you to get it on their tip or, or on the schedule.
All right, so then my point is, this document reads like we do that, but we really can't do that. We, we try to influence government agencies to, you know, to do what we would like to do to support our growth. But we can't actually go out and do some of the stuff this implies.
We can do some of the things. In fact, we did things this year on some of the gravel roads.
Yeah.
We actually spent somewheres around three hundred thousand dollars and had roads grabbled with new gravel put on them.
Yeah.
And we, we had the money and we took it to the county and got their buy-in for them to do it.
Sure, okay.
But we paid for it, but from the township.
Can we widen roads? Can we connect them where we're at?
Well, I would add that, I did read in here that it says that we can't do certain things with the roads, but-
Yeah.
We did spell out, or was spelled out in here about what she just described.
Was it?
And then this objective, as I'm reading it, is more or less kind of like what we were going on last meeting, where we were all very concerned about the road and traffic patterns that were going to be created by implementing the new development over there. And so I think really what this is reading is, is more or less as a guide for this commission to be able to, you know, take that into account or approving different developments. So I, I think it's good to leave it in, in my, in my view.
Well, I don't have a problem leaving it in, I just wondered if there should be some kind of a, you say there's a clarification in there somewhere?
Unfortunately, I can't find it here, but I do remember that I was reading through it, it was-
Because I read through all of it.
Yeah, I think it's more in the background chapter.
Yeah.
It talks about traffic and who owns the roads and what their funding is and-
I just hate, we just hate to give folks the wrong impression that we can do something where we actually can't.
And where we can't do stuff with the roads, if you look at objective seven on page twelve, you know, says that we in the committee here, township, we can minimize the traffic impact.
Yes.
So approving or not approving stuff to help mitigate stuff we can't control would help. Okay. Any other questions?
No, no, thank you. But thank you all for putting some work, the work into this. We look forward to your continued input. As I said, I've spent a lot of time with this document over the past two or three weeks, pulling together this draft. And we use, we try to keep true to the 2019 structure. And it really does set up protecting your township and limiting growth to only certain areas. And it does a fine job of walking through the details of why. And so that's something I think that you've had in your master plan since 2010. And so I, I think when this would be done, I'm surprised that it's never been nominated for an award. And I think that might be worthwhile for the township to consider. Because you're looking to limit growth in a very strategic way based on really unique aspects of your community.
Now, when I read this document, it's a solid document, I was very impressed overall, so, I mean, really well done.
Yeah, I agree. And, and I would add that the, this draft over the last one's hugely improved from a understanding perspective. Just the way that it's been formatted is really, and the pictures and things that have been added, it really helps. So I think anybody reading it would probably concur with Mr. Wagner.
I, I agree.
I agree.
You know, I mean, when I, when I read through it, obviously I was on the master plan, so I was surprised, really. Because I mean, I, I had a vision, but it wasn't on paper yet, so it's really awesome.
Well, thank you, and thanks CJ, because he is the talented photographer who took the majority of the pictures in here and was kind enough to share them with us. And then Mateo has really helped to write this, along with all of you and along with all the planning commissions and township boards that came before. And another colleague of mine has done most of the formatting. I'm, I've only been the person helping to weave the spider web.
We appreciate it.
Well, thank you, and I'm sure I'll see you next month.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to number eleven, communication committee reports. We don't have a economic development committee report. What about ordinance review committee?
We have not met since the thirteenth of February. And we will meet the next time on the thirteenth of March at twelve noon.
Okay. And just a point of order for Susan. Is it appropriate now to appoint Patty to the ordinance review? Or how does that have to go about? If you're still interested.
It's, it's not on the agenda. And so the only way you can amend your agenda at this point, because you've already approved it, is if you had a full board and it was a unanimous-
Okay.
Vote. So you could just send Cheryl an email, well, don't send it to Cheryl. Send me an email.
Okay.
Because between Kelly and I and Mateo, we'll be doing your next agenda. And just remind us to put that on there to appoint Patty.
Okay.
Now, that doesn't mean that she can't go to the meeting.
To the thirteenth.
Right. Yeah, she could still go to the meeting, just make your official appointment that night.
Okay. Does that work for you?
Yes, it works for me.
Okay.
And when do we meet?
Thirteen noon.
And I won't be in attendance to that because that would give four people, so it's-
Yeah, so once Patty's going to be there, then-
Yeah, and I'll step away.
Okay.
There's a small one over here.
Through the door to the left.
Okay, okay.
And do you have a badge that lets you in yet?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, number twelve, planning and engineering reports.
As I indicated before, the next meeting on March thirteenth, you have rezoning scheduled. It's the northwest corner of Drainer and Lepire Road. The proposal is to rezone it from Office to C2. Also that night, there'll be public hearings for animal definition, for zoning works amendments dealing with animal definitions, state licensed daycares, and then also gas stations in I1 and I2. And whether they can have a associated retail store. Currently, they cannot. The proposal is to allow them to do so in I1 and I2. It's currently, they're allowed to have those, I believe, in C2. And ORC has talked about it. Mateo said that you guys had been brought up to date about it. But that, this is, but it's going through a different process than usually with the ORC recommending it. Because it was brought by the township board to, for the Planning Commission to look at that. Did I sum that up correctly? And then there's been several pre-application meetings in the past months. So we anticipate that you will have developments before you at your rezoning days.
All right, very nice. Well, thank you very much.
Welcome.
I guess the only thing left is a motion for adjournment.
Motion for adjournment.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.